I call this meeting. I call this meeting to order. Welcome to the South River Mayor and Borough Council Meeting Number Four, held today on February seventh, the year 2022. May I have the statement of publication, Madam Clerk?
In compliance with Chapter Two Thirty-One of Public Law of nineteen seventy-five, notice of this meeting to be held at the Criminal Justice Building, sixty-one Main Street, South River has been published in the Home News Tribune on January sixth, twenty twenty-two, posted on the municipal website, and also on the front door of the Criminal Justice Building. Also, that it is published via Zoom. Pursuant to the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, New Jersey Statutes Annotate, Annotate ten colon four dash eight B, this meeting will be held by means of use of electronic communications equipment. Due to the COVID pandemic, no members of the public shall be permitted to physically attend the meeting at the Criminal Justice Building, sixty-one Main Street. The public, however, is invited to attend the meeting electronically, and the public will have the opportunity to speak. The borough is utilizing this format in an effort to mitigate the chance of exposure to COVID-nineteen as a part of the borough's ongoing effort to slow the weight of transmission and avoid overwhelming our treatment centers.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Krenzel?
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Here.
Councilman Gindi?
Here.
Councilman Gurchensky?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yeah.
Councilman Olivera?
Here.
And Council President Seola?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. May we have the salute to the flag? I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please have a moment of silence. Thank you. Moving on with our agenda. There are no proclamations, honor, awards, or presentations, no executive session. There is no agenda session. We then therefore move to our ordinances on second readings and public hearings for ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh-three. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh-three, an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank for calendar year twenty twenty-two.
Make a motion, waive the full reading.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made by Council President Seola, seconded by Mr. Gindi to waive the full reading. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? The ayes have it. Opening this ordinance up to the public. You may literally raise your hand or use the Zoom option of raising your hand to discuss this matter. You may please give your name and address, and you can ask any questions or make any comments. I see one from Mr. William Smith. You have your hand raised?
No.
Okay.
Hit it accidentally.
Okay, I'll lower the hand.
I don't see anybody else's hands raised on first call. Second call. Nobody sees anything else. Third call.
Motion to close.
Motion made by Councilwoman Ballas, seconded by Councilman Gindi. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? The ayes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance.
Motion move.
Or, Gindi, seconded by Mr. Seola. Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilman Gurchensky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
And Council President Seola?
Yes.
The ordinance is twenty twenty-two dash oh-four. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter One Ninety-three, entitled Vehicles and Traffic Pertaining to Restricted Parking on Hillside Avenue.
Make a motion, waive the full reading.
Second.
Second up.
Motion has been made by President Seola, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas to waive the full reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Hence, the ayes have it. Opening this up to the public. Please give your name and address, and you can ask any questions, make any comments. And again, raise your hand either literally or figuratively.
I don't see anyone.
No, I don't see anyone either.
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion has been made to close by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Mr. Seola. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? The ayes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance.
Motion move.
Ordinance is to move by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilman Gurchensky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
And Council President Seola?
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh-five. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter One Ninety-three, entitled Vehicles and Traffic Pertaining to Handicap Parking on Stanton Street.
Make a motion, waive the full reading.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mr. Gurchensky to waive the full reading. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? The ayes have it. Opening this up to the public. Again, raise your hand, either raising your hand or by the Zoom tool there. You can either way get our attention, and then you can make any comments or ask any questions on first call. Second call. Third call.
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion has been made to close by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? The ayes have it. Pleasure on the ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
The ordinance has been moved by Mr. Uh, let Mr. Gurchensky move the ordinance, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilman Gurchensky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
And Council President Seola?
Yes.
Thank you.
The ordinance has been adopted. We now move to ordinances on first reading by title only to introduce them. They will then be at our second meeting of February, on February twenty-eighth. We will then have the second reading of those ordinances. The first is twenty twenty-two dash oh-six. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, repealing ordinance two thousand dash fifteen, creating a handicap parking space at Holmes Avenue so as to amend Chapter One Ninety-three, entitled Vehicles and Traffic. That's the first reading. They have a motion.
First reading. Mayor, I moved at the council pass ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash zero six on its first reading by title only. And the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with the second reading and public hearing to be held on, at seven P.M. on February the twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers at the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mr. Gindi. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilman Gurchensky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
And Council President Seola?
Yes.
Thank you.
Revisit this on the twenty-eighth of February. Moving on to our next ordinance, twenty twenty-two dash oh-seven. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance to amend the Code of the Borough of South River, Chapter Twenty-two dash nine, entitled Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, by amending Section Twenty-two dash nine point two point A, membership terms, background checks thereof, pertaining to adding officers to the board. May I have a motion to accept as introduced?
Mayor, I moved at the council pass ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash zero seven on its first reading by title only, and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with the second reading and public hearing to be held at seven P.M. on February the twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers at the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
I'll second that.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mr. Gindi. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilman Gurchensky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
And Council President Seola?
Yes.
Very good. We shall revisit this on February twenty-eighth. Moving on the agenda to our reports, as we traditionally do. Mr. Koch, good evening.
Good evening, well, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not a lot of change, if any, on my report, but I'll run through it anyway. The twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one roads were started, and once the warm weather arrives, we get the contractor back out there. We're working with them on shop drawings and other little matters associated with the project in the meantime. The twenty twenty-two local aid program, you got your grant for that, and when you're ready, you can authorize us to work on the design. I'm sure you have to do your financing first, so. The electrical substation maintenance, no change in that. I will be talking to the contractor again to get a schedule for that work, the sweeps and the cables. Well, number two replacement, we did get some comments from the D.P.P., and we are working on putting more information together for them. The electrician who's been waiting for a couple components to continue with the electrical work has told us that that equipment is now the day is the eighteenth of this month. It keeps getting put off because of supply problems, but I'm hopeful that we'll get it then and can get that part wrapped up. And that is my report, sir.
Thank you. Any questions or comments to the borough engineer?
I do, Bruce.
Yes.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Bruce, I had asked you about the brownfields. Thank you for sending for the list. Bruce, what? What makes a property or a location a brownfield? Do you have like a definition of it?
I don't have one. I know generally it's contamination. That needs to be cleaned up in order to make the property useful. But I can get you a definition for it. If I knew ahead of time, I would have had it for you at the meeting. Did you get the email I sent out with the various properties that were on the D.P.P. website?
Yes, I did.
Good. So I can look into that. I'm sorry, that's more of something our environmental division handles. I'm familiar with it a bit, but not enough to give you an accurate definition.
Okay. Just for everybody else's information, I asked about the brownfields because of the grants that are out from the D.P.P. that we might be able to use. And the Shade Tree Environmental Commission is actually very active and interested in wanting to get some stuff done. So we were just taking our steps and seeing what properties we have in town that are brownfields, what we, we as a borough, might be able to help with improvement. But we're still trying to get further, I guess, knowledge of that type of situation and be able to move forward with it. So thank you, Bruce. I will contact you again.
Yeah, it's fine. I wrote myself a note on it as well, so I'll send that out to our environmental guys tomorrow. Soon as they respond to me, I'll forward it to you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I do have a question, Bruce. And I know Councilwoman Mayor has mentioned this. I don't know if anyone's had the opportunity to go on Olszewski of late, but it's like a ice pond. I know we've talked about potential solutions, but I, I do think it's time we consider, when I drove by this morning, not this morning, this afternoon, coming home from work, there was, you know, children were playing on it. God forbid they fall. You know, there, there has to be a solution that we can come up with because it, it seems to be getting bigger. And it just may be, you know, me, I haven't seen it in a while, but it is an ice pond now that unfortunately still exists.
And Jase? Yeah.
Jason, if I may, Mayor. Jase, I mean, I've, I've been driving around with this thaw and stuff like that. There are multiple, multiple corners
Oh, I know.
that have the same problem. And a lot of it is from the residents with their subpumps, putting it out to the street. I sat there and watched on a couple corners as the pumps were exiting all the water from the homes. And it's not just Olszewski, it's multiple areas in town. So if, if we're gonna do one, we're gonna have to try and figure out how we could do everything to correct all the problems. Cam Avenue and Whitehead Avenue are just as bad, if not worse. That's a major thoroughfare there. So we have to really, like, take good consideration on what we have to do. And a lot of it is the residents, again, pumping out the, the sub, their subpumps onto the streets.
Bruce, if I may, haven't we done this for other streets before with the same drainage issues?
Yes.
I know we realize that it's been the subpumps going out to the streets, but our ordinances allow that to happen. So it's an ongoing problem. I've been talking about Olszewski since two thousand and eighteen. That's why I asked and, and asked this council to consider putting that corner in one of our road projects to get it done. It is getting more and more dangerous, and we can't just say, oh, it's the residents' fault if we allow it to happen. So there's gotta be more of a solution there than
We'll have to look into the ordinance and maybe make some changes on that.
The problem has always been is that there are not enough. We, we have sanitary sewers, but we don't allow them to pump into there. The problem is the storm sewers.
Yes.
Not in all the right spots. When we redid Raritan Avenue, we also did Franklin Street because there is, I believe, some four difference pumping, some pumps pumping out into the street, and that was taken care of. Problem that exists, however, is that we couldn't go across Wilson to take one more in. And hence, when he pumps out, you've got a gigantic mess at the corner of Wilson and Franklin. The problem exists in Olszewski and in other places also. It's a matter of if when we're down there, if we're redoing a street, that's the time to do it, to hook them all up. The same was done with Wesker Hoveyak Street. There, the problem wasn't some pumps, it was underground streams. They would just come down from the hill, come right out onto the street. The sewers were there and taken care of. So it's a matter of, are we in the area? Are we working on it? Because then we have to take the pipes from the storm sewers and take them over to where the some pumps are and allow them to be discharged into there. So when we are in that area, then we can do it.
Believe we just resolved the problem on Wilcox this past year.
Yeah.
Correct, because it was very dangerous, and it was piling up, and residents keep coming out and complaining about it. And I've had several residents reach out to me, again, for Wilcox and Prentice Avenue, and they said it only got worse after P.S.E.N.G. repaved that road. And like, there's gotta be a, a better solution than just waiting to do that street. Prentice was just done by P.S.E.N.G., where we won't be ripping that up anytime soon. So when are we going to, you know, fix a solution, a problem that's been there for several years now? And I mean, if you guys want me to forward you all the complaints I get and the pictures I get, I'll be more than happy to do that. But I've been saying this since two thousand and eighteen, and it's not getting any better.
Well, what you could do is forward us the solution, and then we study it and see if it works.
Been asking Mr. Mayor for several years now to put it into the roads projects that we do. That way, when we bid it, we can get the project done. I think even, I'm not an engineer, but maybe even adding an additional catch in that area might mitigate some of the issues going on there.
Mr. Koch, didn't we do some kind of a study on that? And the price was gonna be over four hundred thousand dollars?
Bear with me. I have the letter with me in case this came up. I recall it being, at that time, a hundred and ninety-nine thousand. But I do believe I have the letter.
There was another corner I was thinking of, but I could have sworn it was up there.
Yes, in February, on February sixth of two thousand and nineteen, we issued a letter regarding it. It says that, to address this, we propose the installation of approximately nine hundred lineal feet of perforated HDPE, which is just a irrigated polyethylene pipe, and drainage inlets along the eastern side of Olszewski towards the intersection of Prentice. The pipe would continue along the south side of Prentice and connect the existing drainage system on Foothills Drive. That's what pushes the cost up so high.
Right.
There's nothing nearby. And as I said earlier, the estimate at that time was a hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred ninety-three dollars.
Okay, so at the time now, we're looking at how much more to extend it? And are we gonna be able to do that with the road project and with the DOT money that we get in? Right now, I believe we're up into the twenty-two with the DOT on trying to pave some of the roads that have been basically ignored over the last how many years? And they're literally falling apart. So, I mean, what would it cost today approximately to do something like that? And how many roads couldn't we pave at that point?
Well, that's the problem. There's only so much money.
Right, exactly. That's what I'm saying. I mean, what would it cost to do that one corner compared to all the other streets that we're trying to do?
You mean to tell me there's no other closer, uh, not sanitary sewer, but storm sewer lines?
When I looked, Mayor, and went over this, that is what I found. I will take a ride to reevaluate that, but I don't think it's changed, sir.
Now, us adding another catch basin is impossible. It has to just be connected to the existing one? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah, well, if you connect it, if we, if you were to have a catch basin built on the corner and the water went into it, at some point, it would probably freeze buildup because it would be a seepage pit essentially. There would have to be an open bottom on it to allow water. But I think the problem there would be if the homes in the area having so much problem with water in basements or crawl spaces, then we may, it may not have very good permeability in the area. The groundwater table's probably high there. So to do that, I've thought about putting an inlet at the top and an inlet at the bottom and connecting with a pipe. But again, you could spend a lot of money there, and it might help, but it might not. Connecting it to another storm sewer where it has positive flow out would be the most positive solution and is what has worked in all the other installations. If you wanna do something less, we can certainly try it with the understanding that I couldn't tell you that I could promise it would, it would probably help. I don't know that it would be totally effective, depending upon the volume of rain and what the weather conditions are.
Thank you, Bruce.
All right, thanks, Bruce.
Thank you, everyone.
Bruce?
Yes.
Brownsfield?
Yes.
It's a property that actually connects, that happens to have contaminated from the adjacent property. We deal with it all the time in my line.
Okay, thank you, Peter.
Where? It, it can be fixed. It's a very costly job. Just so you're aware.
Which brownfield you're referring to, Mr. Gindi?
What's that?
Which ones are you referring to?
No, yeah, the question you asked was, what makes a brownfield? So I'll give you a definition to what makes a brownfield.
Just the contamination?
Yes, based on contamination from adjacent property. That's what makes it a brownfield.
Okay. Point of that discussion was because of all the D.P. money. Well, most of it is grants or loans or low-interest loans, and we thought it could be beneficial to us if we had. I mean, Bruce, you sent that list over, and you had a few other towns on it, and other towns have like one or two brownfields, and we have sixteen.
That just happened to be the overlap. If you look through that site, yours is short compared to some others. Go to Perfect Envoy or a couple other sites. It just so happened, and I, I, I didn't think it was necessary to cut that off because it's on a public website for public viewing. So I, I didn't feel like I was advertising anything bad about the towns. But if you have a moment to look at that site, you'll see some others have a laundry list of them.
Yeah, I just saw the few that were attached to it, and they only had one or two, and our list is like sixteen properties.
Yeah, but that, you, you will see others that are much greater.
All right.
Most of them are oil tanks, I would think, looking at the residential, so. Last thing, Bruce. Bruce, you know, back at the beginning of twenty twenty-one, they had the infrastructure bill that was coming through, and the federal government's getting ready to start doling out that money. Sniff around and see whether or not something like an Olszewski project could be done. It's a fairly large project, and it will be quite expensive, much more than just two hundred thousand dollars. But not only there, but maybe in a few other places also. If the federal government's going to give out money for shovel-ready projects, we have a shovel-ready project, or it's two or three, that we can give them. And it's not just paving roads, it's actually doing underground work. So.
If, if, yes, I will look into that, though. I, I think, I will check and see what I can find out. But my understanding was it was kind of getting pared down to a lot of water and sewer projects, not, not storm sewer, but sanitary, but I will certainly check. And by shovel-ready, I think they mean projects that are designed, permitted, and ready to go.
We, we can move very quickly to get something ready to go.
Very quick, you know.
You could always just spend a meeting.
I, I will gladly look into that.
Very good. All right, then. Anything else for Bruce? Hearing none. Thank you, sir. Have a good night.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night, Bruce.
Thank you all. Take care.
Mr. Zanga? I don't see you on my gallery, but I know you're there, so. Good evening. Anything to report?
It's just two things. You have a resolution for phone service agreement with Hunter Carrier Services for the police department. This is for long-distance and nine-one-one service. And then the two thousand twenty-one annual financial statement was filed today, so it's filed with the state of New Jersey on time. It'll be on the website by the end of the week.
Very good. Anything for Mr. Zanga? Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Sores, good to see you. Anything to report?
You know, what they have is the borough calendars have come in, and they can be picked up at the DPW office, forty-eight Washington Street, fifty-five Reed, and also the library. So I got.
Thank you. Anything for Mr. Sores? Are we gonna have any more snowstorms this year?
No.
Nope, okay, excellent. All right, thank you.
How is our salt situation holding up?
We're good. They've been good with the deliveries.
Good.
Thank you, Adriano. We usually don't have our Uh, we usually don't have our fire chief with us, but today we do. So I will see if you, Fire Chief Smith, have anything that you'd like to, uh, discuss. You can unmute yourself.
Mayor Krenzel, I have no issues. Everything is working well. We did submit our final report to the state on January first, so we were our current for the last year. We are doing well. Thank you.
Excellent, very good then. Our chief police, Chief Tinigan, anything to report?
No, Mayor, not at this, not at this time.
Okay, very good, sir. I think I got all the usual ones there, then I'll go to our clerk. Uh, do you have anything to, uh, report?
No, no report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And our, uh, legal ego out there?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. That leaves, as we traditionally end with, Mr. Lundenski?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Okay, then I will go, um, accordance with my list here, my view of people. First one I see is Mrs. Ballis. So, Mrs. Ballis, do you have anything to report on any of these departments or?
Yeah, just, just a couple. I attended the Cultural Arts and Heritage Commission meeting on the twenty-fifth. Uh, currently plans are underway for South River Day to be, uh, done on June eighteenth. And they're currently working on the Memorial Day Parade for May, and as the dates get closer, I'll keep everybody up to date on what's going on. The Food Bank is having an Easter basket drive. They are collecting items that they can put together for, uh, Easter baskets for the children of the South River Food Bank. Anything you think would be pertinent to put in, um, candies, small baskets, trinkets or toys, coloring books. You know, anything you think a little kid would like for Easter. Uh, the collection dates, it began February first and it goes through March thirtieth. The collection locations are the South River Food Bank on Jackson Street and Corpus Christi Church, the entrance to the church. And, uh, my next meeting for Cultural Arts, Arts and Heritage is February twenty-second, which I will be going to, and the health, border health is February seventeenth. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilman, uh, Gurchensky?
Thank you, Mayor. The only, uh, as you heard from, uh, our DPW director, that the, uh, calendars are available, which are a little bit different format and much more informative this year. And also, our Office on Aging is, uh, starting to open up again, too. Um, most of the centers have been closed throughout the county and everything to, uh, comply with the COVID restrictions. And, uh, we're starting to do, uh, a lot of other things again, too, with the Office on Aging. The exercises classes that will be resuming in March and on Thursday at nine, nine-thirty AM. Um, barring any issues, we're gonna introduce excursions to a limited amount as far as the seniors go. And, uh, in the process of, uh, to combat the effects of isolation with many of the seniors, we're looking into a few problems and everything like that, too, where we could re-acclimate a lot of the people and everything, too, to do away with some of the depression and everything from the COVID isolation. Um, also, the AARP is unable to conduct the income taxes for our seniors this year. And what they want to do is we're working with some of the neighboring towns to accommodate our members. And anyone interested, uh, should contact them at, contact the Office on Aging at seven-three-two With that, I thank you, Mayor.
You, thank you, sir. Mr. Olivero?
Evening, everyone. So I have a little bit to report out, uh, in terms of Board of Ed. Today is the last day to submit resumes for the open, uh, position that they have. Uh, just a reminder, Friday, uh, this upcoming Friday is an early dismissal. And on the twenty-first, schools, of course, are gonna be closed. Wanna give out shout-out to our Rams Winter Sports, our, uh, girls and boys basketball team are doing really well and, uh, look forward to seeing them in postseason play. In terms of recreation, uh, after a, uh, brief pause, winter sports are back in session. So wrestling, basketball, indoor softball, uh, the clinic and gymnastics will be starting up, uh, shortly. Uh, the Recreation Advisory Board had their first meeting of the year. I'm super excited about that. Uh, we finally got everyone together after, uh, a, a pause, you know, especially with the pandemic. But everyone's excited and ready to bring some awesome ideas to the town. I wanna thank the mayor and council for putting up ordinance twenty-two dash nine-point-two. Uh, as I was preparing for the meeting, I noticed that we only had a chairman or chairperson position, uh, on the ordinance. Um, and the Rec Advisory Board typically has a secretary, a treasurer, uh, but those are, weren't, uh, actual positions listed. So that ordinance that we have for first reading today actually adds additional positions that we discussed at the Rec Advisory Board meeting. Um, I also wanna thank, uh, Mayor Krenzel for appointing two new members to the Rec Advisory Board. Uh, this will put us at eight full-time members. We're still short one. Uh, that will hopefully be approved at the next meeting. And in terms of spring sports, uh, Lakeisha sent out the flyer to the schools. They're also gonna be posted on TV thirty-five. And the new rec platform, Civic Rec, I believe it's called, it's pretty awesome. You can do sign-ups online directly. Uh, you can pay for field space online. It's very accessible. The only program that you won't be able to do online payments for right now is going to be the, uh, cheerleading classes. Um, in terms of the cheer competition, you will be able to purchase that online. But due to the other classes, uh, be, due to there being, uh, packages for the other classes, that has to still be done in person, uh, at fifty-five Reed Street. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Gindy?
Thank you. Um, next planning board meeting will be on February fifteenth, and the next zoning board is February twenty-second. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mara?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just wanna mention, I've had a few meetings already with our uh, Shade Tree Environmental Commission. They've got great ideas coming up for this year. Please keep a lookout for that. Uh, one of the projects that will be coming up is a Lego collection. That would be for residents to drop off any Legos that they no longer use. This is being done by one of our junior members. He will be playing a, a project which consists of collecting all the Legos and being able to um, distribute them out to people who don't warrant for to have. Uh, so please look out for those bins that will soon be out at, um, we will have one at forty-eight Washington, possibly the library and, uh, the food bank, but I'll have more information on that, um, soon. Uh, the Environmental Commission will also, but would also like to thank Jason for attending our last, uh, meeting. We had, um, some great ideas regarding our trees and the way we'll be updating or how we should implement our updating of our shade trees in town. Um, one of our speakers that came to the meeting was also in from the Rutgers, um, university, and he, uh, explained to us better, uh, he explained to us a lot of things, but, uh, it was more of ideas on what types of trees, um, that we would need in our borough, be able to expand, um, you know, the, the beauty in that. So, um, take a, keep a lookout out for that. Uh, I was also, I also attended my first library board meeting of this year. Um, thank you for that appointment. Mayor, I did see that you added Mr. Ruckar as our um, new member for the library board. We still have one position open and I was hoping that you would have appointed that for this meeting. Um, whenever that gets done, uh, hopefully at the next meeting, we can have that in. Um, that's all I have for now.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Seola?
Thank you. Um, the Budget Committee has met a few times now. Um, we are moving forward with working on our budget for two thousand twenty-two. Just wanna thank Mr. Zanga and Mr. Lundenski for their great job on getting everything organized and presenting to the, uh, the Budget Committee. Um, the EDC, the next meeting is on the sixteenth. Uh, they're moving forward. We've had a preliminary, um, discussion and walk-through town with, uh, the Director of the Metuchen Downtown Alliance, which will be attended our next meeting. So we can start moving forward with our redevelopment and, uh, getting some more business into town. And with that, Mayor, I believe that's it. Thank you.
Okay, then. Uh, my plan was to give the State of the Borough address, uh, today, but I decided that against that because I, I usually find states of the borough, town, county, union, uh, to be long, boring, and not really informative. So I decided I'd do a little something different. I'm gonna break it down into pieces. Um, this way I can give you, go into more depth, uh, on, on an issue and let you know a little bit about more what's going on, like, for example, the electric utility and what, uh, our plans are and how they can get easily derailed by, uh, other entities like our state. So that'll be coming up in the future as I break it down, the electric, the water, recreation, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, that's all that I have. Moving on to our, uh, agenda, we have public comments. Uh, please, again, raise your hand, or you can use the Zoom function of raising your hand. And, uh, you'll be given ten minutes. Please give your name and address. I see one. Okay. Janice Kaminsky-Cortez, if you can unmute her? Go ahead.
Okay, Janice Kaminsky-Cortez, forty-six Foothills Drive. Um, I have, um, have been attending several of your meetings and it was decided in the November meeting, um, since I've had a problem with code enforcement, uh, at my property that, uh, an independent code enforcer officer would visit and make an inspection, and I have not heard of a date as of yet.
Was there a date, Mr. Lundenski? Does anyone know about, uh, who is going to come?
Well, I know, Mayor, everything is in order.
Who was supposed to come?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I believe at one of our meetings, I made the suggestion of finding, since we do shared services with other towns, if another town would do our code enforcement, since this situation has not been resolved for several months now. Uh, I believe at that meeting, Mr. Lundenski said it would be hard to find another town that would do that. And I believe that's what she's referring of.
Right, and I, I don't understand why it would be hard, though your ordinances are your ordinances. This is not, i- it's an inspection.
I don't remember, Mr. Lundenski, did you ask Keith Brundtuk to come in?
No, I didn't, Mayor. We were waiting for the DCA report.
That's right, the state came.
Independent body.
Right.
Uh, as, as I recall, at that meeting, it was said that I thought our inspector would come as well.
Well, did the DCA ever issue? Did the DCA ever issue its report?
DCA is coming to my address on Thursday this week.
You mean they haven't even come yet?
They're coming Thursday. And then, and when I spoke to DCA, um, many of the things that I mentioned, they said would really be for local code enforcement. And if local code enforcement was not dealing with it, that the mayor should deal with it. That's what I was told today. And the Borough Council.
Let Mr. Lundenski know when, uh, when they're coming down, what time they're coming down.
I, I'm requesting for an independent person to come in. That's what I was told in the, I'm in the November meeting. I thought that was what it was agreed by, by the council.
Was that, well, the state of New Jersey's coming down to look at it.
The state of New Jersey's not, is coming down to look at one part of my complaint. They're not looking at all of the other complaints. The other complaints have to do with local ordinances.
Well, let's see what the report says. Let us know when they're gonna be there.
No, no, it's hard to, 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 you know, interrupt again, but as I said, this has been going on for, now we're on our second year. Okay, so this has been a long time. I've been coming to meetings. I have, I have forwarded all of my email correspondence, all of my photographs. And as DCA told me, those, a lot of those issues are local ordinance issues. And if code enforcement is not following what ordinances are, and I have a problem with that, then I should go to the mayor and the council, which is what I'm doing. So I'm trying to follow what would be procedure. They're not going to look at, at individual ordinances that are local to our town.
Then why are they coming?
They're coming because of dispute about the size of the wall, which is not on the permit. As you recall, it was a permit for a two-foot wall. The wall is clearly over two feet. I was told by the, your Borough Attorney, Ms. Wyatt, that everything was in order, that permits and, um, inspections were all done and, and properly done. And when I went for the Oprah report, we see that the permit is for a two-foot wall and there's no inspection. And it took eight months for me to get the Oprah report.
Mayor, if I may, I strongly disagree with that characterization of the past history of what has happened. Um, I would also caution council to, um, to potentially not comment on this, as Ms. Cortez has threatened litigation against the borough multiple times, um, for various reasons concerning this issue. Um, just counsel be aware that that is in the air, that, uh, a complaint, I don't think a formal complaint has been filed. Excuse me, Ms. Cortez. I don't believe a formal complaint has been filed. However, uh, she has threatened litigation and has contacted, um, various agencies concerning litigation of, over the borough, so I would just caution you potentially to not comment.
Well, I can tell you, I did, I contacted the police twice. They came and they wrote a report of what they saw. They took pictures of the, the, the wall being supported by a board with railroad tie stakes and how it's crumbling underneath and caused a two, almost two-foot drop on my property, which I fell. I had to go there to take a shot on, on Wednesday at CBS. Okay, so what, you know, what, what do you want me to do? The DCA is telling me this and, and that's right. My, my option as Ms. Wyatt has, well, she was the one who told me that it was an air first of Superior Court. So if I do, if I, if I go to Superior Court, I would name all of you, if not, you know, the Borough Council, the lawyer, Mr. Drop, uh, your, Mr. Lundenski. Thank you for, that it's a two-foot permit. It was not a two-foot wall, and I made a complaint. And I have all the di- documentation to prove it. I've been trying to solve, as I've tried to solve this way back with Mr. Effinger. And when the wall was just built and there was no fence. Okay, you can ask Mr. Koch. He did visit my house. And I have the, the correspondence to show for that as well.
If I may.
And I have the email from, as I said, I have the email from Mr. Lundenski saying they would drop one block in the wall. It was never done.
If I may. If I may, just to correct the record, I did not, um, advise in any of my correspondence with Ms. Cortez that she, that this matters for Superior Court against the borough. I merely indicated, excuse me, I merely indicated that this was a property dispute between her and her neighbor and that the proper jurisdiction for property disputes between neighbors is Superior Court. That is how my correspondence, uh, read.
Okay, so, okay, so I was told by the legal counsel that, um, if, if a permit was given for a two-foot wall and it's not a two-foot wall and I, and the borough is not doing anything to, to invest, to, to, to look at it. It, it's an open permit. It doesn't have an inspection. I, you know, that's my choice. Uh, try to resolve it here with you or to go to court with it. I would prefer to try to have solved it within the borough because I'm just trying to look and see what, what's on the books of ordinances in South River to be followed. Right? If you apply for a permit, you're supposed to truthfully put down what you're building. Obviously, they didn't. And I, when I made a complaint about that, it was not her.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, didn't we all agree as counsel on that date that she was, that she's discussing? I believe it was December, me, that the mayor was not there. Didn't we all agree to look into another, um, town doing the inspection?
It should be on public record because it was agreed. Mr. Lundenski even said out loud during the meeting that it might be hard to get someone to go against another code official. So it, you review your tapes. It should be on there.
Well, how about if we do this then? Mr. Ludenski, contact Serval and East Brunswick. See if you can get somebody to come in and to review the records and give us their opinion. That is what we will do. After that, where you're going to have to get yourself a lawyer and listen to their legal advice. Okay?
Okay, but I, 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 okay, so they're, they're coming to inspect or are they reviewing the records? Because the record says a two-foot wall, correct? That, that's, I, I want to make it clear.
I don't know. So we will do that and revisit this twenty-eighth. Your time is up, madam. Thank you. Is there anyone else? On first call? Second call? I don't see anybody. Third call?
The call is to close.
Which has been made to close by Mr. Gurchensky, seconded by Mr. Gindi. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. Mayoral appointments, there are none. Moving on to the agenda then, there is the consent resolutions. Madam Clerk?
Where is Resolution twenty-two-two dash oh-one authorizes Borough Council utilizes consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time. Now, therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved that the below-listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in full as if the same were individually acted upon. Consent Resolution eighty-four, except January twenty-first, twenty-two, regular meeting minutes eighty-five. Appoint instrumentation automation and computer system of the water utility eighty-six. Authorized property owner list refund eighty-seven. Authorized agreement with phone service eighty-eight. Authorized change order number one for the upgrades to the borough's fueling station. Eighty-nine authorized South River Board of Education March twenty-twenty-two tax payment. Ninety authorized February seventh utilities refunds. Ninety-one authorized the bills and claims list. Ninety-two appoint members to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Ninety-three authorized waiver of liquor buyback trust fees. Ninety-four authorized engine company number one, fire department boot drive. And ninety-five appoint a member to the library board of trustees. May I have a motion?
Motion. Motion has been made by Councilwoman Ballas, seconded by Mr. Gindi. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindi?
Yes, looking at my station of ninety-four and, uh, and the, uh, ninety-one, twenty-one dash zero three two-two-one.
Thank you. Councilman Gurchensky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera? Your mute is on, Councilman.
Sorry, guys. Uh, I said yes with, uh, but I will be abstaining from, uh, consent resolution eighty-four.
Thank you. And Council President Seola?
Yes, the extension from ninety-four.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you. There's no resolutions to be read separately under new business. That leaves us governing body comments for the good and welfare of the borough. Start backwards, uh, with Councilwoman Mira.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I had a quick question for you before I started with my comments. I emailed you, um, a resident interested in a position the day after our last meeting. I'm just curious to know how long do you want before you appoint a, um, person to a committee?
The, uh, person was for the library board. I spoke to, uh, Mr. Rossiter there. Uh, and I have actually a note here. And I was going to talk to Sue tomorrow about that, as I believe that all the positions are, are filled on the library board of trustees. Um, so that's why nobody else got appointed there.
If I may, if I may interject, please, what I'll do, Mayor and Councilwoman Mira, I will email you, uh, what the roster has, so you can see what I'm looking at.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Tomorrow.
Evelina had mentioned to me that there were two resignations last year, so the appointment that you did for this meeting, yes, fills one and there's still another one.
Okay. Yes, and there may be somebody else also interested in the position, so, but I, we will look into that. By the way, did you know when I said about filling out the form? Are you familiar with that form?
I got the form from the clerk. You mentioned it.
Yeah, because it, uh, I was unaware of it until our clerk had mentioned that this thing is existed from the state of New Jersey. Uh, that anyone is interested, there's a form, an official form to fill out, to be given to the borough, to the clerk's office, so that was something new. So that's why I said to, uh, have that person do that.
Okay. And then I would also mention that for your library position, um, I would actually reach out to your, uh, mayor's alternate, who I've, from my understanding, hasn't attended any of the meetings or the last few meetings, so, um, I would just ask, since they were probably reappointed this year and you didn't speak to many of the people you reappointed this year, to maybe reach out to that person as well.
I already spoke to Christopher about it and he assured me that he will be attending more meetings and I told him that if he isn't going to do it, he should resign.
Okay, thank you. Um, I am very happy that after last meeting, people reach out, they watch, they, um, they are interested, so I hope that we don't turn away people that are interested in volunteering with our town. Um, also, TV thirty-five uh, has mentioned that now you can add to your YouTube, the subscription of South River TV thirty-five, but you could also add it as an app on your Xfinity or on your smart TV. So just to make it an easier access for people who might not use TV thirty-five or, but still have Xfinity, you can watch our meetings, uh, through YouTube that way. Uh, other than that, I don't have anything. I hope everybody has a wonderful Valentine's Day and, uh, oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. Uh, we spoke about the infrastructure. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you are right. We have this big bill coming out with a lot of money that we can receive and with our water infrastructure, um, all the water main breaks and things that we have in town, it is a good idea to really look into that for this year. Uh, there is money that's coming out and we just have to look for it. Uh, the DEP sends those weekly things about grant money and uh, like Mr. Olivera says, if we had a grant writer or somebody who can help us and assist us with grants, we would be able to accomplish so much more within this town, being a small town. As you guys remember, we got a $10,000 grant from our previous business administrator with the, um, electric charging station that gets used downtown and our Overbridge Street parking lot, so there are small things like that that can really change and, uh, give a big effect to our town, so uh, I will definitely be searching for some infrastructure, uh, planning for our town and I hope all our council members on here will do the same. Other than that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gindi.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Miera, at the last council meeting, I know she asked, uh, Mr. Zanga quite a few interesting questions. I had the opportunity to speak to Mr. Zanga. And to my surprise, the last budget meeting, or sorry, last budget from last year, there was an actual line item for the actual money that was being brought in from the field use as well as the light use. He was right. It was right, right around fifty-five hundred. But what I did not know, which was pretty interesting, was fifty-two, fifty-five, believe it or not, got put back into one of the parks, which happened to be Perkowski Park, for maintenance and actually benefited what we did. But then she also asked another question. The other question was, she kept on asking, what's the deficit? I think what she meant to say was, how much did we actually lose with people using the lighting? The people did not pay for the lighting. It came out to right around, not to the penny, right around twelve-hundred and fifty-five dollars. That's what the town basically paid out. But when it came down to what we actually brought in from the other, I says, I guess you'd say paying customers, we brought in right around fourteen-seventy-five. The, the purpose of what we are trying to do is rehabilitate the parks. I know I said this at the last council meeting. Uh, I'm strongly for it. I really want to bring the parks back to life. And for us to do this, we have to start somewhere. So, um, you know, I'm happy to see that the numbers are working out. I'm hoping that it moves forward. I'm hoping that people are going to start using our fields properly, which I know a lot of people ask for field requests. So I'm happy to see that we're hopefully moving in the right direction. Other than that, I want to thank, uh, the DPW for a beautiful job on our roads. I know it was not easy. Uh, I had guys out there eighteen, twenty-two hours, uh, plowing. Uh, what you don't know, I know I've seen this in a lot of, uh, streets, after they would come by with their plows, people would, you know, throw their snow back out in the roads. What you don't know is that's a problem because they're set on a schedule. So when they're doing their run, they don't see what you're doing, so that snow may stay out there. And of course, we're going to get those complaints. We're going to call and say, hey, my, my road was not plowed. Reality, it actually was. So please keep the snow on your side, let the guys do their job, keep the cars off the road, which I know the police department did a fabulous job with, uh, informing the, uh, town. And, uh, hopefully we get past this winter. Other than that, um, happy Valentine's Day to everybody. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Olivera?
Uh, good evening again, everyone. Uh, first, I just want to start off by, uh, thanking, uh, Mayor, Council and all the professional staff. Uh, as most of you guys know, I had to miss the last meeting. Unfortunately, my wife had a, uh, um, medical issue with pregnancy and she had to have a procedure done on the twenty-fourth. Um, you know, and one of the things that really stood out for her and for myself was every single one of you guys called. It didn't matter, you know, what side you were, it didn't matter, you know. What mattered was, you know, my wife's health and, you know, that meant the world to us and definitely provided some support, uh. That was much needed throughout this process. So, you know, from the bottom of my heart, my wife's heart, my daughters, I want to thank each and every one of you guys for your kind words. Uh, it has not been easy. She's doing well, uh, but it'll take some time. So thank you again, everyone. I, you know, it, it means the world to us. Um, in terms of, you know, school, school is back in session full-time. I do see that there is, you know, some more traffic, especially as the winter comes on. We're going to see more and more cars. Please be patient. The police department, uh, is doing a great job trying to navigate everything. Um, so I just ask for patience on that. Age, I know everyone has really talked about DPW, awesome job with the snowstorm. The guys are, are doing, you know, this winter has been exceptional when it comes to cleaning and plowing. So I just want to thank you guys for your hard work and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Gurchensky?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to thank all of our public service workers, our police, fire and especially our DPW for the jobs that they did throughout the town. Um, the guys who are out there every morning salting some of the bad spots that had iced over in the evening and everything like that too. And I give them a lot of credit. They're out there doing the best that they possibly can. Um, it's been a pretty rough winter. We have a lot of potholes and folks, please bear with it. A lot of the patching can't be done until the roads are reasonably dry and clear before they can get back to that. Um, with that, I tell you all to be safe, be careful at the intersections. Look out for your neighbors, stay warm. Happy Valentine's Day and take care. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mrs. Ballas?
There I am. Our first responders and the DPW workers, they did a fantastic job with the snow. I have to agree with Mr. Gindi though and they are throwing it back on the street, so. And then also, they had cleared off all the corners and then, of course, the corners got covered up, but they were right on, on, on the mark with going back out there and cleaning the corners for the schools. Enjoy the warm weather coming up the next couple of days. We're going to hit the fifties, so there's going to be more thawing. Um, enjoy the Super Bowl. Depending on which team you're rooting for, I just want it to be a good one. A happy Valentine's Day to all and, uh, to those who have off on Presidents' Day. Enjoy your three-day weekend. That's it.
Thank you. Council President Seola?
Thank you. Um, again, I just want to reiterate, as everybody age, uh, the guys did a fantastic job. They were throwing things back in the street. As I was driving around, I seen the people with the snow blowers just blowing the snow right back to the street. Again, please, throw the snow on your front lawns. Keep it off the street. The guys are coming through. Get your cars off the street if you can. Park them on your front lawn, the sides of your house, wherever. But get them off the street so the guys can plow and then once they plow, you can put them back on the street. So it's very, very important to try and cooperate with the plows. This way they come through one time and they can get the job done. Uh, as this past snowstorm, it just kept on blowing and snowing and it just, no matter how many times it went past, it was back out again. So again, thank you for their hard work, age. Please extend our grateful thank you to them. And lastly, happy Valentine's Day. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, yes, so thank you to the DPW, all to the old, the emergency workers. You did a good job. Also like to thank, I don't know how it was in other parts of the town, but around my neighborhood, uh, even though it's not a snow emergency street, the people took the cars off of the street. And they were able to do an excellent job. That's what's key. Take, to get the cars off the streets and then they can plow through. I mean, there's always one person that always has their car there. You do it, take care of it, and they can do a good job. So thank you to the DPW, emergency workers and to the people that pay attention to these types of things. Wish you all happy Valentine's Day and happy Presidents' Day. We will come back. We're going back to our every third week schedule. We'll see you on February the twenty-eighth. Is there anything else to come before us? Hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Gindi, seconded by somebody?
Mrs. Ballas.
Uh, Mrs. Ballas. We'll have Mrs. Ballas seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. We stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Have a good night.